Being seven o'clock, I'll call to order this February 26th Board of Selectmen meeting. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just a couple announcements. First of all, the notification of the broadcast channels for telemedia is broadcasting this meeting live and also taping for later rebroadcast. If anybody else in the audience is audio or video recording, if you let me know at this time, independent. And also, it's the policy of this community not to wear political buttons during a meeting. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with public service announcements. We have a notification about the Shoba Valley Technical High School Committee. At our next meeting, we will be appointing a member to that committee for a three-year term. There is one slot opening up. Anybody who's interested in that position can check for an application at the Town Manager's Office or on the Town Council website. In the event that the alternate is appointed to the full position, we will also hopefully appoint an alternate to fill that position for a one-year term. So that will be at our next meeting on March, what day is it?
Twelfth.
March 12th. So applications are due by March?
Seventh.
March 7th, is that right? Okay. Should've had you read it.
Sorry.
Okay. Next is open session. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board about any topic this evening? Mr. Harrington.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chair, I should say. I'm just here to announce the, as Executive Director of the Chelmsford Business Association, my name is John Harrington. I want to announce that we're having Candidates Night, March 8th. We've been doing this for well over 20 years, and we'll be asking questions and so forth to the Selectmen and School Committee. It starts at seven o'clock with refreshments, and we start at 7:30 sharp. It will be held at the Radisson, as always. Is there any questions?
I think we're all set.
I think we're all set. Has anybody received a packet yet from?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So we want to make sure. When did you get that, Laura?
Two days ago.
Okay, yeah. Sometimes with the mail, we get a little concerned. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Anybody else? Thank you. There you are. We're on to committee vacancies.
We have the following committee vacancies. As of February 26, 2018, one associate member on the Board of Appeals, one vacancy on the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee, four vacancies on the Civic Committee, two vacancies on the Community Action Program Committee, up to 21 vacancies on the Cultural Council, two vacancies on the Energy Conservation Committee, four vacancies on the Holiday Decorating Committee, all applicants are welcome on the Parade Committee, there are five openings on the Public Celebration Committee, one vacancy on the Recycling Committee, two vacancies on the Sign Advisory Committee, two vacancies on the Skate Park Committee, one vacancy on the Tree Committee, and one vacancy on the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee. If you are interested in serving on a Town Board Committee, please apply on the Town website or contact the Town Manager's Office.
Thank you. Okay, next up is a public hearing for a National Grid and Underground Conduit petition on Riverneck Road, if you want to come up and talk to us about this.
Good evening. My name is Dave Aguirre, and I'm representing National Grid. National Grid is asking the Town of Chelmsford for permission to install cable and conduit along Riverneck Road for about 40 feet, and this will serve a development that's going on right up the street from there. It's four houses, and that's going to feed those four houses. That electricity will feed those four houses.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this petition for underground conduit on Riverneck Road? Okay. Seeing none, does anybody on the board have any questions? Glenn?
You said there are four houses, but on the plan, it looks like more. Is there a?
Looks like five, yeah.
There's going to be five houses up there.
Three, six, yeah.
The house closest to the street, that's going to be fed overhead.
And are those two families, or those?
I believe they are multi-units.
Their condos.
Any other questions? Do you want to come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, my name is Audrey Broll, and I reside on Riverneck. So I don't really have a for or against comment, but it would be nice to get additional information about the length of time that will be under construction, what exactly is involved with that, with the development going in. There's been a lot of disruption, you know, ground shaking noise, that sort of thing. So it would just be nice to get more information about what exactly that means for the residents that are near that location.
Okay. We can ask the applicant to address that?
The contractor will dig a ditch, and in that ditch will be all the utilities, probably cable, TV, telephone, and the electricity. I don't see that taking very long, especially if you'd be out on Riverneck Road at all. It's all on the side of the road. If detail is needed, the contractor, I'm sure, will get a detail, and then we'll come in, once the conduit has been laid, and we'll come in and run the electrical wires from that pole up the street to the first transformer, which will feed those houses.
So does that mean like days, weeks, or?
No, I would say that that'd be all done in a week. The ditch will be done at one point in time, and then we'll come back and we'll do it. Our work will be about a day, no longer than a day. But our work won't be, we won't be making any, banging any holes or anything like that. Won't be any vibrations or anything like that. Be unnoticedable.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition for National Grid to install the underground conduit at, on Riverneck Road as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our first report this evening, Evan Belansky, about the, oh, and I guess John Edward, I don't know which one of you is going to give this presentation about the affordable housing inventory.
Good evening. So it's been some bitter time since I've last appeared before you, speaking about the status of 40B affordable housing. I think the last time this was discussed was at town meeting where a list of pipeline projects was presented to town meeting. So the, you have the first, the first table? So just going to walk through the two tables that are in your packet. Some of this information will be kind of a recap and a refresher for the board members and the audience. But the starting point for, right here, right now, is the 2010 census. 40B is tied directly to the census. So in 2010, Chelmsford had 13,741 year-round housing units. That equaled 10% equivalent of 1,374 units to reach 10%. The most recent state housing inventory, as of October of 2017, had the town at 12,064 units for 9.2%. That equated to 110 units shy of 10%. Under the current 40B regulations, Town of Chelmsford needs 69 units of housing production within one calendar year to achieve a one-year certification. The town did achieve certification back in August of 2017 via the 50 Hunt Road project, which was 84 units. That certification expires this August, 2018. On the right column is the status based upon recent approvals that include 52 units at Gorham Street, four affordable units at the Riverneck Road project that you just heard about, and five units at 73 Dalton. That's a total of 61 units. And as you can see, based upon current approvals, we are at 9.64 units with a delta of 49 units remaining to achieve 10%. The next table is a little bit more detail as to what will happen or what we anticipate to take place between 2018 and 2020, making some projections. So the top of the table, again, starts with the 2010, 13,741 units. Units that have been approved and are pending approval are the, as I just mentioned, the four units, affordable units at 271 Riverneck Road. That project consists of a total of 15 housing ownership units. 168 units at 104 Turnpike, that is a rental project, therefore, under our inclusionary housing bylaw, all 168 units will count towards 10%. The 52 units at 7Gormer is also a rental project, and the five units at 73 Dalton. So when you include all of those projects that have been approved and pending, counting towards 10%, that brings us to 1,493 units, which brings the Town of Chelmsford over the 10%, up to 10.87%. The asterisk associated with this summary is that the 168 units that are part of 104 Turnpike legally are not counted yet, and those will not count until the applicant brings forward a local action application to the Board of Selectmen for their review and approval and signature. So as of right now, we're at 9.64%, not including the 168 units. However, as part of this exercise, we do fully anticipate that that application will be forthcoming in a timely manner. The other active 40B application that's currently in front of the zoning board is 61 Carlisle Street. That is a proposal for a total of seven units. That would bring Chelmsford up to 1,500 units and 10.92%. So part of this exercise was to project where we will be when the 2020 census comes out, which will be around 2022, several years' delay in the actual numbers being published. So the breakdown for this exercise was to project new, non-affordable, one- and two-family housing units that have already been built between 2011 and 2017. We average historically about 26 new dwelling units between single and two-family per year. So over a seven-year period, that's 182 units. There have been 101 non-multi-family units. That includes 20 units at 241 Littleton Road, 70 units at 11 Cushing, and 11 units at 191 Princeton Street. Those are all market rate and have no affordable component within them. The next line, the 608 units, includes the four projects that I mentioned above, as well as the 108 units at Mill Road, Princeton at Mill Road, 116 units at Chelmsford Woods, 84 units at 50 Hunt, 44 units at Hillside Gardens, and eight units at Manningham Street. The other item is the seven units at 61 Carlisle. And then the final projection in this calculation is the one and two single-family units projected through 2020, which we project to be 78 units based upon, again, 26 units over a three-year period. So when you run, when you carry those numbers, that brings the total housing units up to 14,717. You carry the 1,500 on the subsidized housing inventory, and that would equal 10.19%, still slightly above 10% by about 28 units. The next line indicates the remaining 40B project that we're aware of. As some of you may recall, that project has already received a site approval letter through the Board of Selectmen comment process. That is proposed at 124 rental units. Those would all count. So the final calculation would increase the total year-round housing units to 14,841 with a 40B count of 1,624 and a percentage of 10.94%. So that's what we believe is a projection when the 2020 census comes out. The final item here is more of a guesstimate, somewhat not set in stone and somewhat unpredictable. If one were interested in projecting out to 2030, again, you can carry the 26 single and two-family units per year, which equals 260, and then that's where the kind of the calculation runs its course, because we're not able to predict multi-family that would not apply to inclusionary housing, as well as 40B projects that may be coming to you via a LIP application. So as of 2020, for the next several years, we believe we will confidently be over 10% and maintain being over 10% for the next handful of years. Any questions on this table?
Anyone have any questions?
No, okay. I think John now has a presentation to give.
Good evening, John Edward, excuse me, representing the Housing Advisory Board. I'm just reading a letter from the Housing Advisory Board into the record, and for those at home and those in attendance, and I will make a clarifying, amending remark after reading the letter. This is in lieu of the situation and projections just presented by Evan. "Based on projects that are pending approval, the Town of Chelmsford will finally achieve the longstanding goal of meeting the Chapter 40B goal of 10% of housing units being designated as affordable. This achievement will earn the town certification status and thus much more control over future development of 40B projects. However, as illustrated in the analysis by the Community Development Department, our certification status, or quote 'safe harbor' end quote, is not permanent. Absent further provision of affordable units, the town will fall below the 10% threshold when the 2020 census numbers become the basis for the total housing units. There are pending projects in the quote 'pipeline' end quote that include affordable units, but for now, pending is the operative word. Policy and regulatory boards in Chelmsford should bear in mind a goal to avoid forfeiting the control we have achieved. Furthermore, the job is not done. When the 2020 census numbers come out, they will no doubt show that thousands of Chelmsford residents continue to live in housing units considered unaffordable. The Housing Advisory Board will continue to review proposals for affordable housing projects, balancing the town's well-earned control with consideration for retaining control going forward, while also considering the master plan vision 2020 goal for Chelmsford. Quote, 'There are diverse and affordable housing opportunities for people of all income levels,' end quote." The Housing Advisory Board will also be considering initiatives regarding regulatory and preservation strategies as guided by the Housing Production Plan. Look for us to come back before you in the coming months with specific proposals. And just a clarification amendment. This letter was drafted and approved prior to Evan's analysis being complete. The analysis now does correctly show that we will be above 10% based on what's in the pipeline, but I would like to point out that there's a difference between units being in the pipeline, even being on the subsidized housing inventory, and units actually being produced. And if units are not produced, they can and will come off the subsidized housing inventory. So we're not safe yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for John? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next report from Evan is about the Center Village Master Plan wayfinding.
Good evening again. So this update pertains to, on January 2 of 2018, the Governor announced a lift on earmarks contained within the 2018 budget. Line item 7,008-0900 states that not less than $200,000 shall be expended for a signage and wayfinding program as part of the project to improve the pedestrian, bicycle, and public parking areas and multi-use pathways in Chelmsford Center. So I believe that earmark, for lack of a better word, was submitted several years ago. And so what this has presented is an opportunity for the town to position itself in a request to the Governor's Office in writing via the Board of Selectmen to release that $200,000 earmark. Just for purposes of refreshing where we are in this process, Phase One design has been completed via a $20,000 Town Meeting allocation. The Center Village Master Planning Committee, via Jim Lane, has done presentations to Town Meeting via that completion. He has since appeared before the Historic District Commission and Community Preservation Commission, as well as this Board of Selectmen, providing a summary and update of the recommended logo and branding effort. More recently, Town Meeting allocated $15,000 for Phase One implementation, consisting of fabrication of approximately 20 signs. So in December, I was working with the Center Village Master Planning Committee to issue a proposal for those signs to be fabricated, and then this announcement came forward. And at this point, the committee is interested in kind of holding pattern on the RFP for $15,000 for signed fabrication, in hopes that this $200,000 opportunity would be able to be rolled in as one project and possibly give the $15,000 back to Town Meeting and not need to be used as part of the $200,000 allocation. So part of the process in appearing before you today was to ask the consultant, Faverman Design, who worked on Phase One with the Center Village Master Plan Committee, to prepare a boilerplate proposal for services as well as costs for consultant services. So that's what appears before you this evening. This Phase Two and Phase Three would essentially cover the initial vision of what the Center Village Master Plan envisioned for a wayfinding program, which went well beyond signage. So some examples of the original program that was envisioned within the master plan was to have a centralized kiosk, to have benches, tree grates, tree guards, bollards, bike racks, potentially something as creative as a drinking fountain and public art components. So Mr. Faverman's proposal that's in front of you articulates that he could provide services in the amount of $20,000 that would be, that would come out of the total $200,000. So as I indicated, at this point, what we're hopeful is to be able to send a letter to the Governor's Office from the Board of Selectmen, articulating the town's strategic goals and desires to continue to implement not only Phase One, but Phase Two and Three of the Center Village Master Plan, and to request that the Governor releases the $200,000 so that we can move forward with the full scope of the project. Be happy to try to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Good, John?
So originally, did we get the Center Village people given $20,000 to do the design study?
Correct.
And to do this enhanced work is another $15,000, is that right?
The consultant is budgeting $20,000.
Is that for the consulting part of it, or also for the fixtures part of it?
That would be just for the consultant services.
Do we have any idea what the actual parts cost might be? Any ideas?
So we know that, at this point, we have cost estimates for signage. Phase Two and Phase Three would primarily not be associated with signage. So it's, the way I would envision this working was basically backing into a figure. So the committee working with the community would prioritize, you know, whether they want benches, tree grates, tree guards, and then based upon whatever they prioritize, the consultant would provide a design and then an estimate as to how much those wayfinding elements would be, would cost.
So it would seem to make sense that not all the $200,000 would be spent, even if they were highly motivated to buy all those things. Would that be correct?
I think it would all be spent.
You think it would all be spent?
Certainly, yep.
If it would all be spent, then does the grant specify that it has to be spent on the Center Village?
It does, yeah. The last two words are Chelmsford Center. That was one of our first questions, is whether it could be spent somewhere else other than, or in addition to. And it is specific to Chelmsford Center, which reflects the original request.
And is this grant available each year for people who apply to it?
So this particular $200,000 is not a grant. It wasn't a competitive process. It was, if I recall, it was an earmark request that we made two, three, four years ago, when the Center Village Master Plan, which I think was 2016, was completed. So there's very little, few opportunities to fund these types of wayfinding programs via state grants. The state will fund a design process, but not implementation.
Well, you know, I'm sure that it's going to be an enhancement for the town, and a great redoing of what maybe should have been done long ago. What I was concerned with is that, you know, there's another section of town which is not Chelmsford, which I would hope that some way we find a way to enhance that as well.
Sure. Just for informational purposes, back in the fall, I did submit a grant application to duplicate the design process. to duplicate the design process for North Village. So those grant announcements are due sometime late February, early March. So we're hopeful that North Village will get a design award to be able to do a similar process that Center Village has done.
Great, thank you.
And Evan, just to recap, Faverman Designs, we spent how much with them on the signage designs?
That was $20,000.
And then we approved 50 for the signs?
Correct.
So this will be 20,000 to do the benches and all that sort of design work?
Yeah, up to.
Okay. And of the 200, for instance, buying the signs, we've approved 50. Could you use 50,000 of that out of this 200, or is that separate?
No, we can fund signage through the remaining 180.
Okay.
Okay, you need it?
That's why I was referring to, there may be an opportunity.
To give money back?
Right. The original Town Meeting allocation of 15,000.
Okay. That's great news.
Any other questions? Evan, it mentions about having up to three community or committee meetings. Have those been scheduled?
No, so I mean, as I indicated, the committee itself has kind of tabled implementation. Jim Lane, the chair of the committee, is aware of this process. He had informed his committee that this update would be provided to the Board of Selectmen, and that's what will appear on our next agenda, to provide the Center Village Master Planning Committee an update as to how they want to proceed, and then articulate the timing. What we'll still need to figure out is if the funds are released, whether that would, whether the $20,000 design fee would trigger a new RFP process, or if there's some opportunity to continue working with the original consultant who has, you know, a good history with the committee and with the project.
Okay, yeah, just, you know, I'm sure, you know, based on the comments, the few comments you've gotten here, obviously, the community would like to have some input as to, as you mentioned, some of the things that are included there and how they might.
Sure, absolutely.
Now, do you need a vote from us this evening to send a letter? Is that what you're requesting?
Please, correct. And then we can work with the Town Manager's Office to craft that letter for your review.
I'm probably confused about what was presented to us at Town Meeting. It seemed like we had, the design had gotten pretty far along, so we...
So this design fee of $20,000 would not be to duplicate or replicate what's already been done?
So that's not what the first two bullets are? We didn't just do that for Town Meeting?
What Town Meeting approved was $15,000 for the Phase 1 of signage implementation, and only signage. There's still Phase 2 and Phase 3 of signage based upon the original master plan, which had additional signs beyond $15,000. So the $20,000 would not need to be spent on designing additional signs. All those signs are designed. The additional $20,000 will be spent on designing the specifications for things that aren't signs, such as benches, tree grates, tree guards, things that were not designed as part of the initial design process.
Or if it does help, I can give you a summary, because I went to a lot of those meetings. So yes, in Phase 1, it was about the general signs that were around the center.
Right.
So we paid Faverman to consult on what the sign was going to look like, what picture should be on it, the size of the signs, where they should go at the different points, and that was the first fee. Then they wanted funding to pay for those signs, and that was the 15,000 we approved. Now, in Phase 2, there's going to be more signs further out from the center of town. There's going to be some different signs, kiosks, benches, tree protectors, things like that. So I think now we're going to be paying for the second part of the design, the signs that are going to be further out.
I guess I wasn't convinced at Town Meeting that we needed more than the initial phase of the signs, and we wanted to see those go up and then see how that was before we jumped onto the next phase, so that's why.
I agree with you. That's why I'm not, I don't think this commits the community to any one particular implementation. I think as the chair indicated, the Center Village Master Planning Committee will have to then provide a public community forum, inviting people in, asking them, "We have this available money. These are the options that we can use to spend it on for implementation. What are, what is the community's desires?" So it may turn out that the committee prefers to have more benches and less signs.
And Evan, what you're asking tonight is not to commit to this RFP from Faverman. What you're asking for is a letter to send to the state so we accept the 200,000.
Is there a timeframe to use the 200,000 if they grant it? Do we have a year?
I'm not aware of that. We'd have to look into that.
So, you know, we get this grant, and then all of a sudden, we're just in this mad dash to spend $200,000? That, I just...
I don't think we're forced to spend it, right? I mean, it just would make it available, depending on what the community decides to go forward.
Correct. Yeah, I apologize if I don't know the specifics. After being here 10 years, this is the first time that I've dealt with a potential earmark.
It's just, actually, it's just a little frightening to me that of all the things that we're looking for the state to fund, and they're coming out with this grant opportunity for us, it almost seems like wrong to take advantage of it.
Well, as Evan mentioned, this was something that was promised, I think it was longer ago than two or three years ago. It was definitely when Deval Patrick was governor.
And not a grant.
Right, and not a grant. So it has to be over four years.
But I mean, when I read the master plan, I thought that a lot of, the signage was kind of the final touch. A lot of the master plan was about getting the Riverwalk through and having to handle that building there that people wanted to walk through the center of, and that was it. And that once those things happened, which could take several years, then the signage would be different.
Right.
So that's why, again, I think I said the same thing at Fall. It's like putting the cart before the horse.
So you don't want to send a letter?
Because we haven't, I thought that we were looking for grant money to try to fix the Riverwalk and those types of things, not to put all the signs up and say, "Let's hope that, you know, the master plan actually comes to it." I mean, I just, it's silly.
So that, I think there may be some confusion. There is a $5 million, I think it's an earmark as well in the Transportation Bond Bill. I'm not aware.
So this 200,000 is not from that 5 million?
No, totally separate earmark request. So I'm not aware of any movement on the original $5 million. But, so, you are correct. The $5 million request was the initial request. This came after the fact, and this is the one that we have an opportunity to request release of.
I mean, minimum, I would think that we, you send a letter, you get the 200, and we spend the 15 we already at Town Meeting approved and give the 15, the 15, the 15,000 back to Town Meeting, you know, or back to the town.
I'm just wondering what our governor's thinking.
Who cares?
Evan, a bit on uncharted water in terms of how we get the 200. Is it kind of like an AIA where you submit your bills and they advance so much, and then you submit some more bills and they advance so much, rather than, here's the 200,000, stick it in the bank, we hope you spend it appropriately? Is it more that you get it as you spend it?
I haven't looked into the process as to how an earmark works. The first step, the process, was to get the letter, initiate the process via Board of Selectmen letter.
So open the door.
Correct.
Now, we still would have to, if we do an RFP, that would come back to this board to be approved, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we still have another opportunity to send it forward or not?
Right, is that the program?
Does that make you feel any better?
Well, if we could get this grant and I never have to spend another dollar on the signs at Town Meeting, I would be happy.
Okay.
And get back the 15 you already spent.
To the towns, back to the taxpayers.
Okay, so we do need a motion for, to send a letter?
Motion to send a letter to the governor for the proposal. I don't even know what we're going to call this.
Do you have any preferred wording for how the motion should be?
For the release of line item 7,008-0900 for wayfinding program in Chelmsford Center.
Send it as presented.
There you go.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any additional questions, discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's Evan. Okay, next on our agenda, Evan, you can just stay right up there and talk about the Route 29 site readiness grant.
Sure. So this is a fairly timely update. Back on February 16th, Mass Development held their grant award ceremony. That was in Shrewsbury, and the team attended that award ceremony. So the award is for $90,000. The backstory to this award is that it was applied for in October of 2017. On page 7 of 13, it provides kind of a project overview. And specifically, this is, was a grant application proposing to do a market analysis of the 129 area, acknowledging and understanding that there's 4.7 million square feet down there with approximately 500,000 vacancy, square feet of vacant space every year over a decade period. And certainly, that has went up to over a million square feet and has subsided a little bit recently. But the request was to do a market analysis specifically to determine whether there was a market interest in high-value businesses. This reflects, I think, what the original vision for 129 would be moving forward over a longer period of time, is to try to understand what kind of market demand and interest for high-value businesses. High-value businesses could be defined as biotech, advanced manufacturing, R&amp;D, businesses that have a lot of personal property associated with them. So first, was to do the market analysis to determine whether there was a demand for those types of businesses in Chelmsford. Secondly, was to identify viable uses for some of our historic vacant office buildings that are designed for single-tenant office users. Those are the ones that have been troubling as far as elevated vacancies over the last decade. So to see if there was a match between high-value, advanced manufacturing businesses and converting previously traditional office square footage. And then the third component was to identify if, in fact, there was no demand for R&amp;D, biotech, advanced manufacturing. What is the market demand for Chelmsford specifically to fill the 500, 600,000 square feet of traditional vacant office square footage? So the way the grant program will work is that consultant services are provided via pre-qualified vendors from Mass Development. They will essentially pair us with a consultant team. That will be based upon a meeting between the Mass Development Team and the Towns Team to discuss process moving forward, as well as goals and objectives, to be a bit more strategic, taking the application to the next step of implementation. Another item that's worth noting is that the market study is likely the next logical step in the Phase Route 129 implementation. Now that proper zoning is in place, the branding and marketing process is underway, the new Business Development Director is on board, and there's been continued positive momentum that continues to take hold with recent impending projects. So this study is fairly timely. And finally, as was mentioned at the grant award by the Lieutenant Governor, the results of this study will set the stage for enhanced opportunities for the town to obtain Mass Works Grants to assist in implementing the economic development recommendations that come out of the report. Happy to answer any questions on this one.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the 101 Mill Road Restrictive Covenant. As, if you watch our meetings, you know this is a recurring item on our agenda. Hopefully, we can get it wrapped up this evening. We do have an updated version of the document in our packets. Ken, I know you had done some work on it too recently. Anything that you would like to mention about it that is good or bad about what we have in our packets and any changes that should be made?
Sure. So I started with the first page. The title seems to not have changed.
Mm-hmm.
I thought we agreed we could not call it a renewable historic preservation restriction agreement.
Well, that's why I didn't know if that was even, even needed to be part of it, if it could just begin with what's on the next page.
Next page. Well, I mean, the title is important.
Exactly, right.
They struck Historic Commission, and I thought we agreed we were going to use Historic Commission throughout the document. On page 4, there seems to be in paragraph 3 some duplicate language there. It says, "A grantor and grantee that this restrictive covenant shall be a covenant. Grantor and grantee agree that this restrictive covenant shall be a covenant." I don't know why there's repetitive sentences there.
Which?
Paragraph 3.
Paragraph 3, line 3. Keep going further down. Which line?
First sentence. "The grantor and grantee agree that the restrictive covenant shall be a covenant. Grantor and grantee agree that the restrictive covenant shall be a covenant." I don't know.
Are you English?
No, I compared it to the old one, and it's just duplication going on there. So what I did is I rewrote according to the notes we took at the last meeting, all the changes into this, and then took Paul's comments from this one where he said, you know, the 20-year has to be 20. You can't have a 30-year in paragraph 3 and so forth, and came up with a finalized version with the changes, with the Historic Commission on the front, the Historic Commission inside.
I thought we did say Board of Selectmen, though. I mean, I...
Well, we'd asked Paul to give us some feedback on that, and you said everything else had been Historic Commission.
I think I, that's correct.
I thought we said that we wouldn't have under paragraph 1.
Appeal.
The appeal to the Board of Selectmen. But I thought it was the Board of Selectmen that was going to be granting this, and then Historic Commission would be the one that they would have to work with to make the changes.
Yeah, I brought all the old versions, and I have them all marked up that we agreed on Historic Commission.
You're the one that's granting it, administered through the Historical Commission.
Right, that's my understanding.
Well, I mean, on the front, it says, "The town in attempt to act and through the Chelmsford Historic Commission," and it's signed, the signatures on the back are the Chelmsford Historic Commission. That's how we thought we left it the last time. Those are what my notes read.
We'll go on to version 3.
There better not be another one.
I guess if the Historic Commission is granting it, why are we talking about it?
This property is under our jurisdiction now until we...
Are we doing it? Right? We own it, right, as the Board of Selectmen's? We would be the ones that would have to do something.
You have the authority to dispose of the property and to convey the constriction.
So it's us?
The Selectmen have to sign off on it, on the disposition.
But on the covenant?
Covenant.
The covenant is an agreement between the Historic Commission and the purchaser, correct?
Correct.
So we're just approving the wording of the covenant.
It's a condition of sale of the property through the Board of Selectmen. Right? So in other words, you're placing this covenant upon this transfer of the deed of the property. So I think that's what we've said, is the Selectmen could execute the document, but the restriction will be enforced by the Conservation Commission.
And I think that's what it says in paragraph 1. So I guess the question, Paul, if the version should be the one that Glenn has changed to, to change all the way, it says Board of Selectmen to Historic Commission, or if it's, it should be the one that is in our packet.
And I think the first line on, where it says restrictive covenant between the town of Selectmen, town of Chelmsford, it says acting by and through its Board of Selectmen. That was a change put by Paul Haverly.
Okay.
He's granting it, but the covenant actions are done by the Historical Commission. That's why he had that question, is it BOS or Historical Commission? And I think that was established that it would be the Historical Commission.
All right, so on the front of Paul's, though...
In A.
Right, but on the front, he's got his, acting through the Historic Commission. But now inside, you want to change it to...
I think he probably just didn't change that first page because, you know, it's, nothing on that is, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not a historic preservation restriction either, and it's not 30 years.
Right, but I can't guess what he's missing and catching here. I don't, I mean, I'm...
Because under the conditional rights, it talks about the, with the written approval of the Chelmsford Historical Commission on paragraph one, and then you see the strike-through language, it's the right of appeal to the Selectmen. I think that was the intent.
Right.
So I think you're right, I think he missed the cover page.
Right, yeah. And is there even a need for that cover page? I mean, because it references the property in the, in that first page. And this is going to be, you know, like a recording, like a deed, correct?
Well, if you eliminate this page, you still have the name of the location in the first paragraph.
Correct, right.
So who's going to sign this?
The Selectmen.
The Selectmen.
Okay, so then if we assume all that, the only thing we need to fix is the wording in paragraph three, where you get the duplicated sentences right on top of each other.
Right.
I thought the heading was supposed to be Selectmen, and then the first paragraph was supposed to be Historical Commission.
That's what I have in my notes, too, but apparently we're changing that now.
The Selectmen are making the covenant, but the actions in the covenant are done by the Historical Commission.
Right, so under the conditional rights, that's where Historic Commission comes in.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
You sure?
Just have a clarification. Previously, we, I asked a question about whether or not, as it stands, if someone could put, convert this to an inn or a bed and breakfast. And it seemed to be there was kind of a talk that, oh, yes, it is, it's implied in the zoning.
I think it was...
And it could be. So what I did was, I went, I went to see the building department and the assessors' office. And right now, this is classified, the property is classified as RB. And RB does allow, through an appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals, it to be a, not inn, not bed and breakfast...
Education.
But it can be a boarding house. So the question is, goes back again, what's the difference between a boarding house, a bed and breakfast, and an inn? And I spoke to the building inspector, who has the final say on this. And in the zoning book, it does describe what a boarding house is. And the description is that it has a common area. The common area could be the kitchen, the living room, or bathroom. Doesn't have to have all three, but it has to have a common area. And his interpretation is, to solve things and make it easy, is he feels that a boarding house is an inn, and it is a bed and breakfast, so that all of them... And that implies, that kind of goes to one of the warrants, which talks about having it as an inn. So the answer is, based on what it is now, it could be an inn with approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there's no need to mention that, but it is possible.
And I think, too, when some of the previous speakers came, the twist they gave to it is, well, it was also authorized as education. So if you made it a museum, that was kind of a teaching museum with rooms to rent, then you could get into it that way also.
And that's a by right, that wouldn't need ZVA.
Right, and you wouldn't need ZVA for that. And I think that's why Paul leaves that note in there that says, well, leave it the way it's written currently.
If you, if you put the word inn in there, a bed and breakfast, it would have to be zoned three.
And that's why he left it out.
Because that mandates it.
Right. I think that's why it's intentionally left out.
Right, and I think it should stay the way that it is, that paragraph two is, because if there are any changes that are required for zoning, then it's going to be up to the buyer to come forward with those zoning changes, not us.
So we're good on the whole document, other than the title page fixing paragraph three, and we can approve it tonight?
Yeah, well, we'll see if we can just delete the title page, because it's probably not necessary to record.
We don't really need to correct the language. Maybe it's a little wordy, but...
No, no, if you read three, it does look like they pasted in the same sentence twice.
So I'm okay with that. Do we have a motion?
The only concern I have is that we haven't, we're just approving it, and it's come back wrong multiple times.
Well, then why don't we say exactly what words we want removed?
Okay.
I would delete paragraph three, Madam Chairman. The first phrase that says, "The grantor and grantee agree that this restrictive covenant shall be a covenant." Get rid of that.
And then start with the grantor again.
The grantor again. Insert the, that takes care of it.
Is that okay with you, Paul?
Yes.
I guess that, okay. So basically, just the clause that appears to have been duplicated.
And we're going to strike the title page.
I'll make a motion to approve the restrictive covenant for 101 Mill Road as amended.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just a question, Madam Chair, to the board before we leave this topic. I think we, I clearly understood, and Mike is working behalf of the town for this part, I understand that the board does not wish to undertake any formal disposition of this property until the town meeting acts upon the article that's before it. But I guess the question I have is, should we initiate prior to town meeting, basically to pick up a period of four to six weeks? Or would you just say, you know what, leave this, leave this aside until town meeting acts? Because it's, as you know, a disposition process, and this is going to, it's taken in a question of six to eight weeks to go through this. So should we commence that action, you know, and in fact, not even have bids open until after the town meeting? So let's say May 15th for a round date? Or do we wait till like May 10th and then start the, you know, the six to eight week process? Does the board have a preference? Because again, we don't want to gum anything up. And I don't, that's why I'm saying, don't, let's not open bids or receive bids prior to the town meeting, because we don't want to cause any shadows or influence of the town meeting. But should, I guess the question is, should we commence the project with bids due in mid-May? Or do you want us to wait till after town meeting in mid-May to start this process? In the event that town meeting, you know, obviously, you know...
What does it change if they do approve it?
Time. Well, town, oh, yeah, that's true. Right, right, right.
Still going to have to sell it.
I thought we had agreed we would not do anything till after town meeting.
Well, what do you mean by not do anything?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Not, not put it out for bid.
Well, but bids won't, you won't even accept bids?
We wouldn't receive bids until, till May 15th at the earliest, because town meeting will certainly be completed by May 15th.
There is some upfront work that would need to be done.
Yes, we'd have to do the notification, the advertising, all that type of thing.
So we would not, not actually put it out to bid?
No, we would put it out to bid, but we would not have proposals received until a week after town meeting is completed.
How much, how much time between putting out to bid and getting the bids back is normal?
In this circumstance, approximately 30 days. There are time requirements for posting under the procurement rules. They have to be posted so many weeks in advance several times. But you could probably do it in a 30-day timeframe. The documents from the prior RFP would still be good. We would just be swapping out the prior restrictive covenant and putting in this, this new agreement here.
Yeah, it has to be in a central register, minimum of 30 days. So you've got a lead time to get it in of a week.
Yep.
So now you're, that's your fifth week, and then you generally leave a little bit of time afterwards, because there could be addendums or questions that arise, so...
So if, if the warrant pertaining to 101 Mill Road is accepted by town meeting, let's say it is, then it doesn't go out for sale?
No, that's, that really has no bearing.
Other than the fact that it now could be used as an inn, but it hasn't been...
But even that, I mean, it's, there's nothing, there's nothing set in stone about, even if that's passed, that it has to be that.
Right, it's just an option. And if someone wanted to use it, that they'd have to go back to town meeting for a zoning change.
Does the warrant say it can be an option, or it says it's supposed to be?
No, no, I mean, it's, and it's not a, it's not a, it's...
I read it as it has to be.
No, I don't think so.
I didn't, I didn't read it that way.
I mean, it's only an advisory, more an article anyway, isn't it, Paul? It's...
Yeah, it says, it's just to see if the town will vote to approve the use of the Adams House to be used as an inn.
That's all it says.
And we already agreed that it can be an inn.
Right.
Via...
The only thing this changes is the name has to be X. Is that right?
Well, I think that's...
If they approve it, it has, the name has to be such and such.
Well, to be called the Historic Adams Country Inn of Chelmsford, again, I...
I asked, this is when they came before us before, I asked for clarification on what exactly the purpose of this was. Like, what's the goal? What are we working towards by approving this? And that it could be an inn if they want it to be an inn.
Right, and I think it's to get a sense from, from town meeting whether the community favors this. But it doesn't, doesn't require anything.
And actually, I think delays even, because if you, it's an option. If somebody comes in and says they want it to make it an inn officially and calling it, and they'd have to get town meeting in the fall to vote to rezone it to be an inn.
No.
Well, not based on what Glenn just said.
Well, they have to be a boarding house.
A boarding house is defined as an inn, a breakfast, a bed and breakfast, or a boarding house. So no, they don't.
So someone could buy it now. So maybe that's why, you know, if you leave a week, that makes good sense, because now someone knows that they could buy it and make it an inn.
Well, based on the verbiage that I received, this, the warrant article doesn't do anything. It can already be an inn, so they're asking to be an inn, and it already can be an inn.
That's why I asked before, what was the purpose?
Well, it was a citizen petition, and citizen petitions can say whatever they want, basically, I guess is the answer. So I think, yeah, it wouldn't affect things really one way or the other, how that would vote, how the vote would come out on that.
So right now, the question is whether or not to begin the process or wait till after town meeting. Is that correct?
I think that's what, yeah, the question Paul's asking, right?
I'm in favor of starting the process.
I'll make a motion.
Because the bids, the bids won't be finalized until a week after. So let's say it gets approved to be an inn, someone says, oh, well, I want to make it an inn. They still have time, they got a week to submit a bid, if they so get enlightened in that way. Right, Paul?
Yeah, I, town meeting is going to start April 30th. If it goes four sessions, it would end May 10th. I don't think any of them come back before this board, before May 21st. So that's, because that's going to be the board's meeting in May, the Monday before Memorial Day. So I just don't want to have the sense of...
I would make a motion to start the disposition of the 101 Mill Road property.
Okay, we have a second? I mean, I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. Anybody have any discussion?
I don't know, I just, at this point, I mean, do we, to push it along, I'm not really sure what the petitioner of this was looking for for time. But I think, I don't think they were looking for it to be sold the next week.
But why, what is it, why are we concerned with what the petitioner, petitioner's looking at as the timeframe of it being sold?
The relevance of the article, I guess. And what the intent of the article was supposed to bring about.
Which is naming it an inn?
I'm not sure if it's naming it an inn, or it's to see if the town would like to sponsor in some way the project to make sure that it becomes an inn. And I'm not really sure, since we haven't heard from the petitioner directly, if that isn't more what they were thinking. Be, based on the fact that this project was, originally, we gave the money to do a study, a feasibility study. And I'm trying to think that maybe this is something along that line.
Town meeting...
Previously.
No, town meeting voted that down.
Right, well, they gave them time to do a feasibility study, but they didn't give them the money or the direction that this is what they wanted. And I think that this might be another avenue to try to get that, some closure on that, because...
Let me ask this question to Paul. Paul, if we approve it tonight, it goes to town meeting, and the person who, you know, wrote the petition stands and makes an argument in front of town meeting that enlightens us all to some new revelation, and we say, wow, this is a great idea, can we pull it back?
Sure.
Or extend the time period for...
You could extend the deadline for bids, or cancel it, if that's what the board proves, you know...
Well, it's just moneying it, just decide yes or no.
All right, so we, anyway, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion fails.
So what exactly was the motion to?
To start the process.
All right, so I won't start the process. Okay, okay, that's, I just want to clarify.
Last item on your...
Okay, that's all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Town manager reports.
Just a quick, quick report this evening. I wanted to inform the board formally, as your board is aware, but also the community, is that since our last meeting, the last meeting, you authorized approval of the deed for the Chelmsford Forum. A week ago Friday, the deed was recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Payment was wired to the Commonwealth, and, and as of a week ago Friday, the Town of Chelmsford is the owner of the Chelmsford Forum. And what we obviously notify our insurer, and Mike is in the process of a procurement effort, which I believe bids are due March 7th on the future management of the forum, because our current management agreement expires on June 30th. If there's anything you want to add regarding that, Mike, but we'll, we expect to come before you at your meeting in March with the bid results. We, what Mike has solicited, you can give an indication, we have having interest in...
We've, there were approximately two dozen people downloaded the packet, and I've had calls from several organizations that have genuine interest in it. So I anticipate at least three or four bid packages to be submitted come next week, so... And these are local reputable rank management service corporations.
One thing that will change is now that the town is the owner of the forum, and the state agreement is extinguished in terms of the 20-year legislation, the town is now a, the town is now a property owner and taxpayer to the Town of Billrica for the forum. And Mike has had discussions with the assessors' office over there, and I've been in touch with the town manager. And we'll, you'll see in the months ahead, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, because under, and I'll have Mike explain why that's the case.
Well, when it was, when it was owned by the state, it was exempt. And there was a limited payment in lieu of taxes that was made. However, since the state is now out of the equation, we are the owner. By statute, we are required to pay a full, fair assessment in lieu of taxes that erode. And we've been talking with Rich Scanlon, who's the assessor over there. There is a current assessed value for the property, which is in Billrica, and we know their tax rate, so we have an estimate. But because of the, the change in ownership, there was a new appraisal done, which now they're going to look at that, and then they're going to reassess the property. So this is where we are right now. We're working out the final numbers, because that's one of the inquiries that's come in from the potential bidders, is what will the final tax numbers be? We're also working on the personal property taxes for the equipment that's inside the forum in terms of the concession stand, as well as the ammonia and everything.
I have a question about the bid process itself. Is this, is this the type of bid where we would ask for a descriptive proposal and a price proposal? Or is it just one in the same on this project?
We're asking for price and technical proposals here.
All right. And is this such that you review the technical proposal first, and then if the... And is this such that you review the technical proposal first and then if the, if you like the first guy and you open his financial package and it's within the guidelines that are anticipated that you award it to them without proceeding further?
Well, the town, I believe, still has the ultimate discretion because you're, you're evaluating on the criteria and the town wants to get the best bid possible. So you can look at the technical criteria.
Recently, we had, and I forget the exact which one it was, similar to this. And we were presented a situation where XYZ, their demonstration of the wherewithal about the project was number one.
It was the Economic Development Commission contract for the designs, for the services for the EDC.
Right. And it was designed, it was looked at that that was, there was, they were the most favorable design package. And then it was looked at in terms of the financial package and the financial package fit the budget for the project and therefore the decision was made by the group who was evaluating to go with this one. You know, I, I'm only concerned with the fact that, you know, we don't know how close the second descriptive proposal was to the first and maybe their price was much more favorable and that it would be more advantageous to go with the best value in terms of services and price as opposed to best services, but at a higher price. And, you know, can you address that conundrum there?
Well, there's a set of criteria in both parts of the proposal. So as we open them, we will evaluate them and as you indicated, we want to go with the most advantageous proposal. So and without seeing what the various entities are offering, I really couldn't comment at this point.
Well, the question is, when it comes to us, will we see five companies rated A to B in services and five companies rated A to B in price? Or will we just given, this is the one that was the winner?
Based on my experience to date here, what we do is we evaluate the five companies as we did with the trash and recycling. Look at them individually, rate them, and then we made a recommendation that was passed through the manager to you folks backing up why that individual was chosen based on the criteria and how they were evaluated against the other bidders.
Yeah, there's a minimum criteria to be eligible. In other words, you couldn't have Pete and Joe, who've never managed a rink before, and we're going to offer to pay you a quarter of a million dollars versus, you know, Sam, who's managed a rink for ten years and the threshold requirement is you have to run a rink for five years and he's only going to pay you a hundred thousand dollars. You, you know, you have to meet the minimum criteria that's in the bid language. Then it's basically on meeting that minimum criteria, then it's the evaluative process.
But if it's done like that other one, it's just brought to us to just rubber stamp it. We don't have any knowledge of anything other than trusting those who evaluated it, making the right decision, and we say, sure.
I think we, I think we provided on, on the trash contract, for example, we provided the, all the bidders, the bid prices and so forth, and I anticipate we'll do that for this as well.
Okay.
And I think, and I think, you know, I'll have to go back to what the, the one for the services for the, for the Economic Development Commission on their contract, but I think that was similarly, similarly completed.
I understand Glenn's concern though sometimes. Sometimes we get a bid in front of us and it's just the bid and we're asked to approve it. Sometimes we get some more background.
Right. And we'd just like to be consistent so that we can make an intelligent decision.
Right. And I do remember the solid waste one, that's the one I thought you were referencing at first. And I do remember that we, you know, we did get a-
You saw the three companies.
Yeah.
We'll do that. We'll, we'll give you a tire list of the bidders and the results at the Recommendation of Bid Award.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks.
And then the, and then maybe the other thing, Mike, if you're, if you're on the topic of the forum, do you want to announce what will be taking place this summer? The fellow that was in, it's kind of interesting because they may see photos somewhere that, and the community may be of interest as well to start their marketing.
Well, it, it actually came through Lisa Maroni. She talked to me the other week. She was contacted by the New England Bobcats, who are a new team in the National Indoor Football League. And they are going to be performing their home games at the forum going forward. And their season's going to start sometime in late April, early May. And today, the owner came into the town hall, was introducing herself and brought one of the representatives, a former NFL player with him, with her. And so they're very excited to be part of Chelmsford and they're thinking that they're going to pack a lot of the Saturday nights in the late spring, early summer. So it's exciting that we'll be using this venue for something other than ice hockey in the last few seasons. It's, they haven't done an awful lot in the summer and they've been trying to find alternative uses. So as soon as the ice melts, they're going to be rolling out artificial turf. And as they indicated, and I said before, they're going to be playing Saturday night games. And they said that they usually pack these stadiums around the country. They're playing other teams throughout the country and they're going to be hosting an international game versus Mexico at some point during the season, later in the summer. So they're very excited about it. They're promoting it on Facebook as well as on their own website. So they're happy to be at the Chelmsford Forum and they're looking forward to working with us and participating in the community. That's one of the things they talked to Lisa about. They want to, she, they want to come out to the parade. They want to get involved in some of the community activities and Pop Warner.
Which team is this again?
The New England Bobcats.
Now, if we can just add rollerball.
Oh, I thought you were going to say if we could just, you know, Tom Brady's going to be their quarterback, right?
Will this be officially their home turf?
Yeah.
Yes.
So speaking-
Six, six home games plus playoffs.
Speaking of turf, though, who's going to pay for the turf inside?
They provide it.
Yeah, the owner said they already own the turf and they're storing it in New Hampshire.
What's the name?
New England Bobcats.
Couldn't be the Chelmsford Bobcats. Couldn't make that deal inside.
Home of the New England Bobcats.
But their, but their opponents aren't, you know, aren't New England teams. I mean, they're playing, you know, Virginia-
It's just like the NFL nationally.
Exactly, yeah. They're playing basically in Eastern US. It's a six home games and they have four away games.
That's pretty incredible.
And, and then the other thing is while that turf is there-
They need that hotel built.
There's also, there's also, well, there's that. They would be seeking one day licenses, but again, with the form, the location in Barica, they would actually seek, we cannot issue licenses for a facility that's not in our town. So they would actually seek licenses from Barica for, for, for one day.
It's kind of a win-win for Barica and Chelmsford.
So is, Barica doing their assessment of the value before the, well, this is factored in or afterwards?
What's that?
Barica is doing their assessment of the value of the property before or after this announcement.
No, it's, it's, yeah, it may not change. But also the thing is while that turf is down, they could see it being used by other organizations. Do you think about it? They're only playing seven, you know, six home games, maybe one playoffs, but they did say, mention about indoor, you know, cross soccer. So at least it, it kind of makes it more of a year round facility, which is-
I didn't realize they let the ice melt there in the summer.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It, it, it is not, the forum has not opened for the last, I think, twenty years or so.
It's not conducive, speaking to the current management.
Silver roof doesn't help.
It's, the building is approximately fifty years old and it, it's just harder to keep the ice year round than it is in other facilities, so.
So at least one, again, make more aware of that because you may start seeing some promotional materials and venue out there.
The New England Bobcats at the Chelmsford Forum in Barica.
That's good.
Kind of rolls off the tongue.
In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the only other thing I have, and I don't want to take away your referral, Pat, but about the NIMCOG meeting last Wednesday, are you going to report on that?
No, go ahead.
No, the only thing I wanted to know, I'll, I'll leave you. The only thing I do want to report from, well, a couple of things, if you're going to let me go ahead. One is, is Pat and I did attend, Pat was chair of, obviously of NIMCOG, but I attended the meeting last Wednesday. We heard the proposal regarding the governor's housing choice program and Chelmsford will be applying as well as I believe there are six communities from NIMCOG that will be seeking certification.
Right.
So we will be submitting an application to be certified and it sort of falls in with all the stuff, the housing success and criteria that John Edward and Evan Blansky spoke about earlier. So we are going to seek certification with the assistance of the building department and so forth. And then, and then again, if you get that certification, that does provide you with enhanced grant opportunities through Mass Works and other opportunities. The other thing that was discussed at that meeting is we, the stormwater initiative update, you know, we sort of heard again that there doesn't seem to be any progress towards resolution of the stormwater regulations. And so, you know, at this point, it does not, we don't see a pathway that that will become effective as of July one. So again, it's not on the warrant that you'll be asked to sign. And then we did, as expected, NIMCOG did vote our assessment and per the statutes and per our expectation, our assessment went up by two and a half percent along with the other communities. So I'll probably leave it at that if there's other things you want to report in your referral, but from, from my perspective, those were the takeaways from that meeting. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, so speaking of the annual town meeting warrant, talk about that.
Yeah, we have thirty-one articles for, for the board's approval this evening. The thirty-five day deadline is here in terms of prior to the election. I did check with the town clerk's office. The petition ballot question, signatures have not been turned into the clerk's office. So on the warrant that's before you, it does not include that question, but it does have everything else that you've, you've seen at the last meeting. The only change, and why it went from thirty to thirty-one, is Community Preservation Committee met last Wednesday and they just have added a recurring article just to, to fund the community action, funding the fifty dollar capital fund for recreational use. Usually they come periodically and request fifty thousand for open space and fifty, you know, community housing and so forth. They, in their meeting last Wednesday, they reviewed, Laura, you were there, as you know, but anyway, so we do have an article. So that's the only change is to replenish the Community Preservation Fund recreational use account. And then I met this morning with Lynn Olunchek. We reviewed finally the bylaws from the Disabilities Commission. They, they made a change from their Disabilities Committee meeting event last week. Instead of requesting Braille menus, they want large font menus with sixteen letter size font and bold lettering. And then the other request is the blue painted handicap parking spaces. The ground surface would be painted if, if available in terms of, is it suitable material and with the handicap placard on it. So basically, the law doesn't require, requires a signage, but it does not require, so their, their feeling is they'll get more compliance if the, if the ground surface itself, you know, patuminous is painted, the blue with the seal on it, which is rather common. So that's, those are the only changes from the warrant that, that was presented to you previously.
Okay.
Ask a question, nineteen.
Sure. Nineteen, rescinding the authority for the school module account, yes.
I assume they've given us a full accounting. That's all done, right, obviously?
Believe it or not, there's still aren't a few punchless items. We haven't made the final payment, but there are no further requisations coming back. They're, they're, they're still waiting for a couple punchless items from the contractor. But what this is doing is we never borrowed that extra million, so we're removing that authority to borrow that extra million dollars.
But it's not debt that was issued or anything else. It's just removing the borrowing authority.
Right, exactly. Right.
Okay, any other questions about the warrant? Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the two thousand eighteen spring annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Selectmen liaison reports and referrals. Ken, we'll start with you.
I have nothing. I had no meetings last week.
Laura?
The Roberts Fields is having another public input session, I believe tomorrow at six.
Senior Center, yeah.
The senior center, thank you. And, let's see, we did the community preservation. And the only thing I, other thing I heard about, it's a little early notice, but women of today are having their eighth annual bowl-a-thon on Sunday, April twenty-second, and they're looking for teams.
April second?
Twenty second.
Twenty second of April.
April twenty second.
And registration is from one thirty to two. Bowling will be from two to four. They're looking for teams of six and with a registration of ten dollars per person, sixty dollars per team, and they're looking to get sponsorships as well from each person, trying to hit a goal of three hundred dollars per team or fifty dollars per bowler. So this gives you a little time to go out and get your sponsors as well as try to gather a team. And if you don't have a team, you can show up and they will put you on a team.
I'm going to be on a team, Paul? Is that what you're going to say?
No, you can schedule that in conjunction with the Patriots Day walk, early morning walk.
Oh, that would be perfect.
Before, the Monday before.
They've already hit me up to see if I would get the selectmen team going, so.
They always do, yeah. Okay.
It's a good, fun time. All right, that's all I had.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that the school committee is having a major meeting tomorrow night. They're going to discuss the budget. The meeting is, they're going to start their regular meeting early at six o'clock, hope to finish that meeting by six thirty, and then they're going to get into the presentation. They invited the entire town meeting members and so anyone who wants to go should get there early. Could be full, hopefully it will be, and just wanted to bring that forward.
It's public input, so they will, are public input before and after the presentation.
Right. And the only other thing is, and I apologize, Laura, this is concerning your liaison to the Board of Health. I think you're the liaison.
Yeah, sure.
There's been a lot of talk about the fact that the Board of Health has decided that there needs to be a lifeguard on duty at the Radisson. And, you know, they have the authority to do that by the state. The state doesn't mandate it, but it gives local boards of health the option to do it. And I just think in, in spirit of being open, that perhaps we invite someone from the Board of Health here to just explain why after all these years they decided to do it. And I'm sure they must have some valid reasons.
Okay, I'll check with them, see if they want to come and talk about it, see how, how it goes forward. Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. This evening, I want to welcome home specialist Stephen Conklin, who is returning from a, a one-year deployment. He was in, he's been in Egypt for the past year, which doesn't sound like it would be a bad tour, but I'm sure it's not one of the easiest ones either. So we welcome Stephen back to town and we're glad that he's home safely. So that's all I have for tonight. Any press questions? Okay. And we have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second their motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is March twelfth.